Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for this Tuesday, October 31st. Hopefully everyone has a safe and happy Halloween today. Be sure to bundle up, it's supposed to be very cold. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman. Commissioner Deb Shore should be joining us momentarily. On my right, we have Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us today from the County Attorney's Office, David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk Dan Nolte. And Kelly Lundgren. From the County Board Office, we've got the Chief Administrative Officer Carrie Egan. And the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer Anne Ames. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Gen 9 and 1 are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, October 24th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday, October 24th. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes to an extension. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through October 31st, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentation, Regional Prevention Coalition Annual Presentation, Sandy Morrisey, Regional Prevention Coalition Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're here to give you an annual update in regards to Lancaster prevention services provided, as well as my regional update. So, I'll start and Terry Voski, Coordinator for the Lancaster Prevention Coalition, will join me. You have a packet in front of you and the top page, if you'll recall, every year with the Substance Abuse Prevention Federal Block Grant Funds, we make certain that each county, as requested, when we developed this in 2003, all counties really wanted prevention funds coming directly into their county. So each year, the coalitions submit their plan in terms of funding needed for specific strategies, and those strategies are based on data. And we'll be talking a little bit about data that's recently been gathered this year. So you can see that for Lancaster, it was 48,150. If you'll recall, the last three years, or four years, that helps to pay Terry's salary because Lancaster also has a Partnership for Success grant, and about $272,000 are coming in annually to support the strategies. So that's worked. We are on the last year of that grant, so we'll be looking at what changes are necessary going into next year. If you turn to the next page, I do want to let you know that we have a Regional Youth Action Board, have since I've been on, since 2003. These are youth leaders, kids that do have experience with leadership. We want to continue to build on those experiences for them. They head up a couple of regional youth prevention activities a year, as well as they're really looking at making a movement with youth getting on board in terms of being the majority to remain alcohol drug free. You can see on the second page of that, that Leo Ortiz is Lancaster Representative Sharp. His first year, he's a senior and very capable, speaks up, does a great job. So we're thrilled to have him on board. As we move into Lancaster, I think we'll save the data for after we talk to you about the strategies, because there's a little bit more involved with that. And so Terry, you want to chime in with the strategies?
Good morning, thank you.
If you would, use the overhead projector.
Sure.
That'd be helpful.
Am I required to be technical?
Nope, we'll take care of it.
Good, okay. Lancaster is in year five of the Partners for Success grant, and our grant has really two outreach, we have the community groups, and then we have some cultural pieces that we use, parenting pieces. But if we look at our strategy sheet here, I'm sorry, I have to stand next to the microphone and read at the same time. Can I borrow yours? Thank you. They haven't made readers that strong yet. We have two goals with the grant, increase family communication around underage drinking and reduce alcohol-related risks among 12- to 20-year-olds. So we're doing that. In the middle with the green ovals, these are the strategies that we're using. We're using Love and Logic, All Stars, Creating Lasting Family Connections, and Second Step. Those are parenting tools that we're using in the community with cultural centers, with community groups, with folks who want more parenting tools so that they can have a conversation with their child about the risks with alcohol and drugs.
All of those, I'm going to interject.
Yes, please.
Are evidence-based strategies.
Thank you.
And the federal government is really requiring that we do use evidence-based programming, and those are programs also being offered in the rural as well as urban Lancaster.
The other piece we've created with this grant is kind of an overarching piece, is the TalkAboutAlcohol.org site. The red brochure that you've been given outlines this media campaign that we've created. We created that within the first couple of years of the grant. It gives parents tools for having the conversation about the dangers of underage drinking and drugs. The Talk About Alcohol site has the campaign, there are downloadable resources that people can get on, they can download the brochure, they can download an information booklet, posters. They can also check out videos. If we have a community training with one of our partners, say Skip, for example, we do a community training, we'll videotape that, and then they skip shares with us. We put it on our site because we feel it's easier for parents to, if they can't make it to something, you know, if they can go on and watch that video on their own, they can get the training that way. The Heart-to-Heart Parenting Journey is a step-by-step tool guide for parents to help them navigate having that conversation with their teen. A new piece that's just been added is the Youth Alcohol Profile. We've talked about this before, but it's now up and running on our site, and it's on the youth tab. It's modeled after the college alcohol profile, and it's aimed at high school students. It's a piece where students can get on and enter their, privately, they can enter their habits as far as underage drinking, and it will feed back to them, kind of where they stand with their peers. So it's a really nice piece. And then the other big thing that we're in the middle of right now, and it's another evidence-based strategy, is Communities Mobilizing for Change on Alcohol. This is a strategy that we've launched to reduce youth alcohol access by changing community policies and practice. We have just, as a countywide coalition, finished the first step, which is collecting over 140, as a matter of fact, we have nearly 180, one-on-one interviews with community members, asking them about their perspectives on how they're, what they're seeing with alcohol in the community, what kind of policies and practices are concerning to them. While we were out there, we also asked questions about drugs, mental health, and suicide. So we have a lot of qualitative data now that we are in the process of uploading into our computer program to code and get ready to present to the community. And so we're hoping to find an environmental strategy platform that the coalition can get behind to affect change that way.
One of the important pieces with Communities Mobilizing for Change is really to build that community capacity. It's amazing with the interviews that were done, how the people doing the interviews, as well as those interviewed, found that experience enlightening, and wow, we've really got some work to do. So those interviews lasted anywhere from 45 to an hour and a half, and that's simply from people sharing their thoughts, their perceptions. So we will move forward with that on a regional level. So it'll be Lancaster and the surrounding 15 rural counties. It's an important piece, they'll come back and do more work with us. I will say the Talk About Alcohol site, we're really looking at a long-term sustainability plan. The goal at this point, all of the rural counties have a page on it now, including Lancaster, so any local updates can be done on it, videos can be shared, resources can be collected, and then also the expense in terms of just keeping up the website. And so it'll be minimal for each county, and then we really hope it goes statewide, where it's collaborative, and it's a partnership where nobody owns it, everybody uses it with minimal cost. So we're pretty excited about, a lot of funding has gone into it, the state is watching closely. When I was at the last federal conference, they were just starting to do a website like this. So even if a website of particular county has their own, it's, they can easily be linked to this. Too much money's gone into training with parents not attending, and the Partnership for Success grant was really intended to get those kids and parents communicating. We're hoping the site allows people with, that are multitasking, busy schedules, too much on their plate when they do have time to turn to those videos and utilize it. They look wonderful, it's professionally done, we've worked closely with Agent, a local marketing firm, who's just done a great job. So the last piece, really, that's important. Every two years, so 2016, the fall of 2016, we do our Sharp survey. Sharp survey is done with 8th, 10th, and 12th graders. You have the chart in front of you. You will see that with the Sharp survey, there's a tobacco survey that's done, as well as a youth risk survey. Those are through the CDC, Center on Disease Control, longitudinal study. Then we do the Nebraska Risk and Protective Factor Student Survey, which has gone on since 2003. So we've put together some data, worksheets, that are a little bit easier read for community at large. Briefly, you can see that alcohol consumption within Lancaster County has decreased, as well as binge drinking. We continue to be below the state level on a regional, as well as a local level. Cigarettes have gone down, and we know this through our work with law enforcement. When we start to see a decrease in some substances, we see an increase in others, and we definitely have marijuana, little uptick in prescription drug abuse. We're trying and going to work closely with some prevention dollars for opioid, the opioid epidemic, to really make sure we do some good prevention work, try to keep it out of Nebraska. And then the electronic vapor. The vaping is really on the increase. The scary thing about that is, we don't know what people are putting in those. And of course, we've, it's gotten very confused for kids in terms of marijuana, when they see other states having it legalized, or parents that are condoning it, if they're pro-marijuana. It's really confusing for kids to see that as an issue. And with policy is where we see the biggest change in prevention, so the stiffer the penalties have been for alcohol use, MIP, DUI. The decrease makes sense, but then the marijuana has increased. So we've got our work cut out for us. I will say that federally, and one more thing, so that gives you a briefing, and you can, with the previous, with the other pages, it gives you a little bit more information. Within Lancaster, it was a little under 2,000 youth that had been surveyed, about almost 1,000 of those were 8th graders, and then close to 500 for both 10th graders and 12th, half and half, male, female, which was a pretty typical response across the region. And then on the back, the very back page, it does show Risk and Protective Factor, just some highlights. So it's a briefing, we share this a lot with community. This goes to all of the local community groups, they take a look at the entire report, and that's what they base their plan on for the next year, what's our data telling us? So we know what we're facing. I will say that on a federal level, they're very concerned about mental health issues, and so they've added within our prevention piece substance abuse, related risk factors, and mental health promotion. So my team, we do a lot with suicide prevention right now. There was a bit of funding that came down with the Garrett Lee Smith grant for prevention. We've done over 6,000 individuals have been trained in question, persuade, refer. Schools have been mandated, either for the online cognito training and/or in person. We've had a lot of schools that have called us to their staff development, we're training 200 educators at a time. In Nebraska, we are about 43rd in the nation with the lowest suicide rate, we're in the top 10 with youth suicide rates. We had the Garrett Lee Smith grant back in 2008, and we could see a decline with raising public awareness, putting out some educational pieces, actual trainings, and then resources available to families. So know that we're comprehensive in our approach, we're doing the QPR training, youth and adult mental health first aid trainings, we have a lost team, local outreach to suicide survivors, that's highly utilized within Lancaster, was really probably the lead in the state. And now we're working those into the rural communities. And then we have Wellness Recovery Action Plans, which is so simple, it's almost brilliant, and we have Nebraska Mental Health Association assisting with that. They have folks that will go out and train, we've got it in a couple of the high schools within Lancaster. And youth or adult, it's actually almost brochure-type, where they can write down, what are my triggers? Do I have a mental health diagnosis? Having that in there, so if law enforcement should have to intervene, they can say, do you have a RAP plan? Rather than criminalizing someone that's having maybe a tough time, let's look at your action, your RAP plan. So they've asked them to keep them in the car and on top of the fridge, but the youth are finding it helpful. Who are their supports? What are ways they can de-stress? We've learned a lot from folks that struggle with mental health issues, and they'll say, when I'm having a hard time, it's really difficult to think there are people that are supporting me, or what can I do that is taking care of myself? The kids appreciate this, they're on board with it. If you talk to a room of students and ask them, do you know of anyone that's ever talked to you about wanting to end their life, or that's struggling with things, the entire room will raise their hands. It's a different time, and I think we're trying to adjust to that. So know that we're putting some significant strategies into place, it's the first time. I'm pretty excited about Second Step. It's a curriculum within the schools, it's a social, emotional learning tool. State of Texas mandated it for their entire state, they had such success with it, and within Lancaster, LPS did a great job initiating it. You can work pre-K all the way up to 8th grade with the curriculum. It's a toolkit that sits on the teacher's desk, and it helps in terms of self-regulation, problem-solving, coping skills, social skills, and the teacher uses it throughout the day in different classes. So they may take a break and say, let's just work on breathing, let's be mindful right now, let's be present, kind of break up the studies a little bit. Teachers are loving it, they're utilizing it, we're hoping that through this, kids are picking up on skills in terms of how they can deal with their emotional, their emotional concerns, and/or just others around them. How can they relax and do well, and socially be able to fit in? So we're hoping that we'll start to see some data, it's throughout Lancaster County now, in all elementaries, we've got it into the rural counties. I think that's a great school piece, I don't think we can rely on schools to do it all, they've bought into this, we support it, we'll continue to support it, and build on community efforts in terms of addressing policy. Any questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions, and it relates back to, we've been hearing a lot last few weeks about the opioid addiction problem that we're facing in the country, and I know that Nebraska doesn't have the level of crisis that other states do, especially in the Rust Belt, but could you speak a little bit about that? I mean, because I know that in reading up or researching the issue, a lot of issues arise in the teenage years because there's a tendency to over-prescribe opioids in dental offices. And so I didn't know if that's something that, I guess, what strategies are we working on here in Lancaster County to avoid that type of scenario or situation?
Yes. We, Nebraska does have some funding coming in, I can't speak on the treatment end for prevention. We have two hotspots within Region 5, Lancaster County and then the lower southeast corner, so Richardson, Johnson, Pawnee, Niemaha, Odo. So $35,000 per hotspot is coming into our region to address prevention issues around opioid use. We don't have a handle on it yet in Nebraska, we are taking a strong look in terms of what is happening within our communities. We have a Take Back Day, and we are putting med boxes in terms of folks being able to get rid of them down in that southeast corner. There's a lot of concern with surrounding states in that Richardson area. So we'll get those boxes up and do a big public awareness campaign. In Lancaster, the Pharmaceutical Association has done a good job in terms of setting up with the pharmacies, how to give medications back. So we'll do further education, we are doing some screening and brief intervention training. So at the university level, we had, just had a training for those therapists within that university setting, but we also had local providers. We're really taking a look at, are you addressing the subject, are you asking the questions, and how does that work within physicians' offices? Whether it's dental, or, you know, whatever area people go to, and at this point, we don't have strong strategies, it's really more gathering information, what do we need to do? I think the hospitals have some of that information, pharmacies have been great with sharing their concern, and so it's, at this point, it's still a lot of education.
Have you worked at all with the Attorney General's Office, Doug Peterson? Because I know that he's been a leader in the regional and in the state on fighting the opioid crisis.
Yes. At this point, we've utilized them for some training, and they have a trainer that will go out and do it across the state. And so we're watching closely in terms of next steps and how to best utilize those dollars. Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Amundson.
I was a little, it was disconcerting to find out, to learn that Lancaster County's in the top 10, or Nebraska's in the top 10.
Nebraska.
Yeah, Nebraska's in the top 10 regarding suicide rate among youth. Is there any, has there been some research on what has been the, some of the causes behind it?
Well, that varies a great deal, it could be mental health issues that have not been identified.
Okay.
Family history, those where there's a family history of suicide are four to times, or four to six times greater risk. There's also concern of if friends complete suicide, having to watch closely with peers. That's part of that outreach with the lost team. Research shows nationally that if there is a lost team in your local community, and the lost team includes a clinician, as well as a couple of other individuals that have actually experienced someone in their life completing suicide. So at the time of the coroner going to a death, they'll ask, would you like a lost team to come and support you? At the time, they may just want information provided, sometimes they do want someone to sit with them, but the national research is showing if they get engaged with the lost team early on, it's about 35 to 65 days, maybe a little bit more than that, a month and a half or so, where they will get into counseling. Those that don't get involved, it's almost a five to six year before they get the support they need. So it makes sense that that statistic, that they're four to six times greater, you know, they ruminate on, what could I have done, why didn't I see it, you know, all of that. So it is concerning, we, I talked to you about Second Step, what we're doing in the elementary and middle school. On a high school level, we researched and found, out of Provo, Utah, Dr. Greg Hudnall, he's come into Nebraska, and we're using him in Region 5. We will develop, they're called Hope Squads, in the schools, high schools, and it's actually peer-to-peer mentoring. We're not asking the kids to be counselors. We take the kids through Question, Persuade, Refer, that evidence-based program, so that they clearly understand it's okay if you ask the question, that doesn't increase the rate of suicide. You talk to them about, let's get you the support you need. So what Dr. Hudnall did, he went in his school district, he was second in the nation with youth suicide rates. He was a principal at a school, and he said, something's got to change. He wrote a curriculum based on going to all the English classes, he asked every student, I want you to write down three names of students you would turn to if you were in crisis, that you really believe would help you, would support you. And he gathered all that info, and 40 names rose to the top. He went to those kids and said, you've been chosen by your peers, they would come to you. And he said, he was surprised, some of the kids chosen. From those 40, he said, who in the school, in terms of adults, would you turn to? If a kid came to you and had some concerns about their life or someone else's, who would you turn to? He went to those adults and said, these peers have chosen you. And that's how their Help Squad developed. So he came last March, we did a nice training, we have elementary, middle, high school, and Southeast Community College very interested. We had Brian Nursing also at the table. So we're piloting with those schools that were interested, he came back in July, we've done the extensive training, they have the curriculums, we'll see how that goes this year, how it's built, how they respond, and LPS is on board with the pilot. So the kids, I think they're going to be surprised how capable they are, and they really don't want to take the load on. We've had some community members say, that's sure putting a lot on the kids, it's already there, they're hearing it, we got to give them the tools of how to deal with it. So it's really getting them to ask that question, persuading them that, and actually, suicide is the most preventable cause of death, persuading them that there is help, let's figure out some other options, and then let's turn to the resources available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
We appreciate your time, thank you for listening, I think it's important, and we appreciate your support.
Oh, and thank you so much, and your goal is very important to the youth in Lancaster County, so we very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is number four, new business. Four A is a resolution in a matter of adopting procedures and standards for administering liquor license applications, including renewals and special designated licenses in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, adopting new procedures and standards for administering liquor license applications, including the renewals and special designated licenses. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a resolution in a matter of striking uncollectible property tax from the tax list.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second in the matter of striking uncollectible property tax from the tax list, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is an engagement letter with Baylor Evanon to provide professional legal services to Lancaster County.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the engagement letter with Baylor Evanon to provide legal, professional services to the county. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a mini grant contract application and award with the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety to pay overtime amount of $5,599 for their you drink and you drive, you lose crackdown.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the mini grant application and award with the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety for the you drink, you drive, you lose crackdown. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four E is a mini grant contract application award with Nebraska Office of Highway Safety to pay overtime in the amount of $5,090 for the click it or ticket mobilization.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the mini grant application and award with the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety for the click it or ticket mobilization. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an amendment to kind of contract C-11-164 with clean and sober living for sober living units. The amendment renews the lease agreements for an additional one-year term from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning. Kim Etherington, Department of Community Corrections. I have many grant, or grants, sorry, contracts that are being renewed. So this is one of them that we have annually, renewed annually, so that we can provide housing for some of our pre-trial release folks moving out of the jail. It's temporary housing.
Commissioner Shore?
Do we have a list of people waiting for those units? Are we able to facilitate?
Generally speaking, we move them through relatively quickly so that we can move the next, the next individual into it. So we work really closely with them. My mental health specialists work really close with the region in terms of finding housing vouchers and getting people set up.
Commissioner Amundson?
How many units do you actually have?
There are eight.
Eight. Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Etherington?
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with clean and sober living. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is standardized system of annual reporting certification for roads, streets, and highway programs for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this is the annual reporting that I'm required to do for our federal highway dollars that flow through from the state. It is similar to the county's CAMs, but quite different. It has been streamlined this year, so you're seeing a new set of forms. And if you are, which I hope, I think give a little more clarity than they have in the past to what we're doing. We actually account for every gallon of fuel that goes into every piece of equipment in this report. So it is, it is very detailed. The state has actually made a video on how to understand the report. And if you're interested in that, I can always send you the link.
Any questions for Ms. Dingman?
Move...
Jennifer, excuse me, Commissioner Brinkman?
I was just curious. On page four, there's a line item of donations, money only. So you have people donating cash for your projects?
Um, actually, it, sort of, I guess, is the answer to that. So what happens is, we do have a number of people in Lancaster County, and then God bless them and thank them, that when we come to them and say, we need a piece of right-of-way, just say, take it. Take it. And that happens multiple times a year, way more than you would think. And so I'm always very, very thankful for those people because it really does help our bottom line.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Dingman? I entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the standardized system of annual reporting certification for the roads, streets, and highway programs for the fiscal year. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a recommendation from the purchasing department and the selection committee to award a contract to Midwest Office Automations for cost-per-copy services. The total estimated cost accounting for the initial four-year term is $569,274.
Good morning. Bob Walla, county purchasing agent. So a few months ago, you had a recommendation on your table for the same company and it went away. And we did begin negotiations with another company and that company withdrew their offer as well. So we were still within the time period where we were able to take a look at the pricing and the way that we were putting this contract together. We did send out revised price-cost proposals to all three of the entities that did submit a proposal in the beginning. And from the results of that, we came up with this recommendation today. The main thing that changed from the beginning till now is, we originally had what we call was a straight cost-per-copy program. And that's where we don't own any equipment and we only pay for the copies that we use at a certain amount per click. That developed over 20-some years ago, I believe. Vince was one of the first ones in the country that brought that into play. Great for the consumer because we do not take any liability. Not great when it costs a lot of money to bring in 269 machines upfront with no income other than monthly income for copies. So we found out here as we got to this new proposal, that the option for straight cost-per-copy is basically going away. And now there are requirements for minimums. And so we did put minimums in here, but we put them in at a rate that should be way below what we are currently using. And even with a reduction in paper, which is what our goal is at all times, we have a 300,000 copy per month cushion between the city and county starting right now. So we don't think we're going to have to worry about the minimums. And once we do hit 900,000 black and white and 120,000 color copies, our cost gets cut in half. So we actually get an advantage for between 900,000 and 1.2 million like we do. So there are a lot of moving pieces to this. This went on, the selection committee that we had, had Cory and Dennis from the county on it, and then we had two city employees, and then myself and Brian from IS. So I think we did our best to get a qualified firm that's going to do a good job for us. Midwest is, has had a program at Offit and they've done some schools. They had some very good references. And we are moving forward with them if, with your approval.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Walla? I have one. So there's the part that have the Series 6500, which are the cash payment solutions? Do we, I mean, basically the machines that have, they accept dollar bills to make copies?
Oh, those are for the libraries.
So those are used in the libraries?
Correct. And the customers charge 10 cents per copy. And I believe there's eight of those, one in each one of the libraries.
And then does, is there a report done? Who were the heavy users of the printing?
Yes. We have a, we have a number of reports that give month-to-month number of copies, both for this program, but also for the desktops. We have a lot of those at this time. One of the big changes in this contract compared to what we've had the last 20 years is that the billing will be done directly from the company to the departments. In the past, it has been done through the purchasing department and we build the departments. And that was because not all of the machines were hooked up to the internet in the past and we couldn't remote them. But now we have the capability of remoting all of the machines and doing direct billing only makes sense. There's no reason for us to be doing billing in, as a middleman.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to award a contract to the Midwest Office Automations for the cost-per-copy services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a recommendation from the purchasing department and county corrections to award a contract to Sue Sales Company and Ray O'Hara &amp; Company, Inc. for the annual supply of corrections, uniforms, accessories. The estimated four-year amount of bid number 17162 is $23,000. And the estimated four-year term for quote 5708 is $27,500 for a combined estimated total of $50,500.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to award a contract to Sue Sales Company and Ray O'Hara &amp; Company for the annual supply of corrections, uniforms, accessories. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J, our contract with the following, to provide the annual supply of sheriff's uniform clothing and accessories. Terms of the contract are one year from the date of execution and this includes Ryder's Public Safety in an amount not to exceed $26,000. Don's Pioneer Uniforms in an amount not to exceed $8,500. And Bob Barker Company in an amount not to exceed $1,500.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to award three contracts for the annual supply of sheriff's uniform clothing and accessories. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four K is an amendment to kind of contract C-16-240 with Jim Peterson Auction Services to dispose of unclaimed or abandoned property. The amendment extends the contract from December 1st, 2017 through February 28th, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $4,500.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. Motion, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Jim Peterson Auction for services to dispose of unclaimed and abandoned property. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four L are amendments to the following contracts for the annual requirements of pumping, hauling, and disposal services for liquid waste products. The amendments extend the contracts from November 3rd, 2017 through February 2nd, 2018. This includes county contract C-17-705 with a first-rate pumping service in an amount not to exceed $1,500. And county contract C-17-706 with Tan Air, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $500.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend two contracts for the annual requirements of pumping, hauling, and disposal services for liquid waste products. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M are amendments to the following contracts for the annual requirements of asphaltic concrete. The amendments renew the contracts from November 2nd, 2017 through November 1st, 2018. The amount is not to exceed $25,000 for all contracts. This includes county contracts C-15-545 with Catherine Sons Construction, Inc. County contract C-15-456 with Constructors, Inc. And county contract C-15-544 with Pavers, Inc.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend three contracts for the annual requirements of asphaltic concrete. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four N is an amendment to kind of contract C-15-111 with W.W. Granger, Inc. using the NJPA RFP number 91214 for facilities maintenance, repair, and operating supplies. The amendment renews a contract from October 22nd, 2017 through October 21st, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $25,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with W.W. Granger, Inc. for facilities maintenance, repair, and operating supplies. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four O is an amendment to kind of contract C-14-399 with Truck Center Companies for the annual requirements of construction and landfill equipment repair. The cost to county will not increase due to a price increase from $115 to $119 per hour.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the contract with the Truck Center Companies for the annual requirements of construction and landfill equipment repair. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is a grant contract with Families Inspiring Families in the amount of $15,000 for the Parent Support Liaison Program. The contract is funded by Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This is a contract with Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds. It funds the family advocate at the youth detention center. When talking about family advocates and how they work with people, it's a pretty individualized service. And so not every family advocate is going to be able to form a connection with the family that we've referred them to. Same with professionals. Some professionals may like certain family advocates while others may like another organization in the way they provide the service. And so realizing that, we've previously only contracted with Families Inspiring Families because they were the only person, them and healthy families, services were the only ones in Lincoln providing this. ones in Lincoln providing this. We are now reaching out to other organizations, seeing if there are any interests among them to also provide that family advocacy piece, because we know that it's very unique in that relationship building with the family component.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hoyle?
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Families Inspiring Families for the parent support liaison program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is an amendment to kind of contract C-13-471 with CenterPoint Energy Services for the annual supply of natural gas. The amendment renews the contract from November 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2019. The cost to county is not to exceed $40,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with CenterPoint Energy Services for the annual supply of natural gas. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, consent items received and placed on file the following reports. County Sheriff for September 2017, County Treasurer Report of 2016 Distress Warrants. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and the following. Frankie Farms, Inc., County Culver CPJ 223 South 176th Street and A Street in the amount of $599. William W. Waddell, the second trustee and living trust, County Culver CPJ 223 South 176th Street and A Street in amount of $703. R. Thomas Zumpfey, County Culver CPJ 223 South 176th Street and A Street in amount of $343. Utility permit number 1613 allowing Zito Midwest LLC to install underground fiber optic cable from northwest 140th Street and West Waverly Road to northwest 126th and West Ashland Road. There's no cost to the county.
Move approval over the consent items. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak to items relating to county business not on agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please continue with the announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November 2nd, 2017 at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Oxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017 at 9 a.m. in room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on the one and six-year road and bridge improvement program on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017 at 7 p.m. in room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We are adjourned. Have a good day.[1786.65]